Hey, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, April second. Like to call the meeting to order, and if you please stand and join Father John Holinger for our invocation. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
The Lord be with you. And let us pray. Gracious Lord of all creation, as we gather in this season of renewal and hope, we pause to acknowledge the beauty of diversity and the strength found in unity. We come from different paths, holding various beliefs, yet we stand together with a common purpose to serve our community with wisdom, compassion, and integrity, grounded in our love for you and all that you have created. Guide us in our deliberations and decisions that we may act justly, love mercy, and walk humbly with one another. Give it, we give thanks for the call to serve, for the trust placed in us, and for this opportunity to enrich our community. May our efforts reflect our collective commitment to fostering an environment where every person is valued and every voice is heard. May our actions bring forth the promise of a community united in its diversity, vibrant in its inclusiveness, and steadfast in its pursuit of the common good. And may God bless us and keep us this day and every day, now and forever.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Seeing none. Group of the minutes, did you guys have a chance to review the minutes from March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four?
Yes. I make a motion to approve.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Miss your comments?
I don't have anything this week. I'm sure no.
I have a area agency on aging meeting uh Thursday. And I have a Zoom meeting with kneecap on three P M. on Wednesday.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. Speaking of kneecap, did you guys go, were you able to make it to their open house? Okay, I wasn't able to either. I have scheduling conflict, which was a bummer because I know I wanted to see it and when they came and talked to us, but. Okay, so new business. Have a couple of things here. Alright. So we had our H R director sent us an updated copy of the employee manual that was revised in twenty twenty four. So I will make a motion to approve the Atchison County employee manual as presented by our H R director. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Pat, were you gonna print that agreement for us to sign? You wanna wait and do that under county counselor updates for the forty acres or? You want to?
Well, I had asked to get a scanned copy of the one that the city has signed.
Okay.
And I think we probably will have one.
Okay, we'll revisit that during your part first.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Stephanie Barnes, project concern, twenty twenty five appropriation requests. Welcome. Yep, you can come on up. Move into the hot seat today.
Thanks for having me, guys. Alright, so as you guys know, I'm here representing project concern and our request of one hundred and twenty five thousand for calendar year twenty five. Um, I just figured we'd start with some of the basics. You guys know that we provide in center meals at our senior centers and we provide meals on wheels for the whole entire county, and we're also collaborating with some other entities to provide supplemental services. We do commodity boxes for seniors. And we also provide the farmer's market coupon program for our county, so it's free. I want to say free money that seniors can use at our farmer's market, so it not only benefits seniors, benefits, benefits local farmers and in that we do provide public transportation, but that is not funded under this request is specifically for our senior nutrition services. Um, so I know you've seen the packet. There was a lot of information in there, but just looking at some comparisons. In calendar year twenty two, we finished the year serving over thirty seven thousand meals, thirty seven, two hundred and eight. And in calendar year twenty three, we finished with forty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two, which was an increase of over thirty five hundred, which is about a ten percent increase in the meals that we're serving daily. In twenty three, we averaged a hundred and sixty-five meals a day, and right now currently in twenty-four, we're at a hundred and eighty-seven meals per day, which is really, really big numbers, and we're growing, and we don't want to cap that growth. We want to be able to be available to everybody that needs it, so. Um, beginning in our fiscal year twenty-four, which was technically October first, we started receiving a small increase in our federal side of money, so we were reimbursed at two dollars per meal. Now it's a reimbursement of two dollars and fifty cents from federal money and sixty-five cents from the state. Those are reimbursements, so every month we submit a meal count and we get the money back for those. Those are, I want to say kind of guaranteed unless state and federal money was not to be provided. Um, so at three dollars and fifteen cents, the rest of that gap, which is over four dollars, because our meal cost right now is roughly seven dollars and sixty cents per meal. So the county money is one way that we help supplement that difference. We do ask people for suggested donations, but that is not a requirement and cannot be a requirement in order to get federal and state funds. So three dollars per meal is what we ask people to contribute, but again, it's not required, so. Back in January, I did some number comparisons, and I found it really interesting to see what the percentage was of people that actually are contributing back to our program. And about thirty percent of our participants are contributing back for their meals. So in calendar year twenty-three, they contributed just over, well, sorry, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and some change. So again, that's about thirty percent of what it should have been if people were to pay the full three dollars. Um, other ways, like I mentioned in our funding list and collaborators, we get United Way funding. In twenty-three, it was twenty-two thousand dollars, and then twenty-four, it will be the same. Obviously, I don't know twenty-five yet. I'm assuming it'll be around that mark. Twenty twenty-two is kind of what we normally get. Um, and again, we do write for grants through foundations, trusts, Meals on Wheels America. And we are a part of Atchison Area Community Foundation and do match day for donations, and we hold an annual fundraiser. We're looking at possibly adding a second one this year. Um, the annual fundraiser we just had in March raised about twenty-five hundred dollars for our programs, so that's kind of kind of the gist of what we have helping us support our programs. So, um, yeah, I guess I kind of rambled through that really, really fast. But the county contribution is really super important because it helps us fill that gap and be able to provide these services to anybody and everybody on a on a fairly consistent basis right away. If there was limitations or major, major cuts to what we get, that might look a little different, different. It might be limited to how many people we can serve or you know, how many days a week we serve. It just kind of depends on what kind of direction we'd go in, so. The hundred and twenty-five has been greatly appreciated over the years, and that's what we would ask that you continue to support us with this year or in twenty twenty-five.
As the, I think you said the average cost for your cost of seven sixty?
Seven sixty right now, approximately, because we're in the process of doing some new budget stuff, because we do it about halfway through our fiscal year and it's right about now. Um, so that number might be a little bit tad higher. Just depends on some of the costs that are coming in, because with gas and cost of food, we've really seen some major increases, even in insurance. I I was amazed, so.
Yeah, that the cost of food has really been something. So how how much heads up do you have when they raise their price to you? I mean?
Not a lot. Um, the only company that's been really consistent is like our food trays, because we have to pay for food trays to deliver. So they give us a couple of months notice, and right now, I mean, this past year it was a five percent increase on those costs alone, and that's, you know, ten grand easily in our budget that goes up. Um, but when it comes to food, we don't have a lot. We have been working with Michelle over at Alps Local to try to get some better deals on canned fruits and vegetables, that kind of thing, anything she can help us with. Um, so, yeah, and we just try our best to find the best deals. You know, we use our Sams, we use wholesale if it's a better deal, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, I was just wondering how that came into your budgeting for the next year.
Yeah, it's just you kind of take a, what you have number wise and you kind of just guess when you over the trends of what it's been. Evco has been our partner for a while for the wholesale piece of it. And they've been pretty good to us and not completely jumping us crazy, but you know, we are seeing those, those increases, so.
What is, like Harvesters and so and so?
Second Harvest in Saint Joe.
Yeah.
Um, so we were partnered with them a while ago. They decided that since we were not open to every person, that we were only open to seniors, that they would no longer maintain our contract, because we weren't offering meals to every person in the community, which we might revisit that, because I feel like there's some programs that are right now getting tailored for like just youth. Um, so why, what's the difference in that? But it's something I'm in the process of exploring, so. So we don't get that option. We get our commodity boxes from a company in Kansas City. I think it's called Cross Lines. And then we do partner with area agency and do the state piece for that farmer's market coupon, so. That's right right now.
On the folks that you serve, is there an annual signup process or like once they're on the roster, they're on the roster? How does that work?
So they are on the roster, so whenever they sign up, it's a year to date that they renew. So they have a case manager through area agency that renews them for a year.
Okay.
So let's say somebody wants them for a month, they are still on our paperwork for a whole entire year. Until they come off through, through that system. Um, but the case manager reevaluates them, people re-sign up through like in center meals every year.
Okay.
So that answers that.
Yeah, no, it does. I was just trying to understand, so like, does the case manager look at whether or not they, they can pay or can't pay all of those things? Because I just from knowing how elderly work, right, is usually they're collecting the meal and eating them, but sometimes not in charge of paying for their bills because their family members are. So I was just wondering if, if the family members get the contract or do we send billing or that thirty percent piece, because sometimes it might just be because, oh, we for, we didn't know, right?
Right, so in the process of signing people up, we explain to them that it is, you know, a suggested donation is three dollars and Shelby does the same thing. Sometimes there's family involved and you can communicate with them, and we do send them like, I don't want to say it's a bill, because you can't say it's a bill, but it's a statement that says they had thirty meals this month, so they, they can pay that monthly. Um, I think we're going to be working on a piece of an informational piece to be sent out to everybody in our, in our system, I guess you'd say, that explains how we run financially and that, you know, those donations back help and just mailing it to those right people or sending it to the right people.
Awesome.
Sometimes we have family contacts that we can get in with, but some people just don't have that either, so.
Nice. Yeah, I was just curious.
How's your attendance right? I mean, compared versus now?
We're pretty steady. I mean, it's not as high as it was pre-COVID. Again, trying to get those activity pieces and things back. We've hit this gap of people who feel like the senior center, they're not old enough for the senior center. So I haven't done the best job of promoting and getting out there um to draw people back in center. I feel like there's some other options, but we've kind of been brainstorming ways to promote that through other places, which I've sent it to churches and I've sent it through some contacts and stuff and um, I don't know, in the last month or so, I think I've had five or six new people in center, which is good for what numbers we do have consistently, so.
As the area agency on aging rep, I mean, Atchison County is really the kind of shining star as far as attendance, especially onsite attendance at the meal centers. Effingham has really been really good. Uh, the camaraderie of the, that, that has been excellent, and so.
And we are, we are, we are producing the most home delivered meals. I know that that's not in center, but I mean, we're blowing other counties out when it comes to regionally, just because we don't have any limitations on what we can do right now at this point. You know, we're really trying our hardest to, to serve everybody that we can.
Yeah, so it's, we've got a very good organization here.
We're working hard. We're trying to anyway, so trying to make it happen.
Great.
Yeah. Okay, awesome. Well, thank you so much for the info and appreciate your presentation and also getting us all the documents where you requested. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know it's a pain, but it's helpful for us.
No, I, I'd rather send it that way. I'm not trying to fumble through it here and completely explain it. We should kind of have some of that in front of advance.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Safe highway become.
Okay, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule. We had fifteen minutes.
I have received a notification that the mayor was not able to attend the meeting last night, so it hasn't been signed yet by the city. Uh, so I've printed the, the one that was signed by Jack, thank you for John, thank you. And so it is there, considered. I had printed three uh signature pages, because I think each entity probably wants their, wants one with an original signature. Also, they are, they are there. It would I, I would recommend the commission approve the, that agreement.
So it was approved last night at the city's meeting, then so Laura Shell can just pop in at her leisure. She doesn't have to wait for the next commission meeting to take it up again.
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you.
It's filed real estate purchase and sale agreement, but this agreement gives us the opportunity after doing a due diligence period uh to back out if the property does not meet our needs. Which I don't anticipate that, but anyway, that opportunity is there for us.
Alright, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign the real estate purchase and sale agreement by in between the Atchison Area Economic Development Corporation, Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, and the City of Atchison, Kansas Land Bank. For forty acres of land located within large, a larger tract commonly known as seventy-seven, seventy-three Mead Road, Atchison, Kansas, located in the cities of Atchison's industrial park, park in the southern part of West Atchison for the amount of for ten thousand dollars per acre for forty acres. It's the same agreement we reviewed.
You're making a motion or you're asking?
I'm asking for a motion since it's for me to sign. Yep, no, you're fine. To allow myself to sign, so it's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero, I'm signing.
I think I'll be agreeing that would be G for the one, someone that was doing anything like that.
Yes, because we should probably do that right now, shouldn't we?
Oh, okay, sorry. All three into like, everybody needs their original signed document, so he printed three. Thank you. Awesome.
Yeah, I think I have one of the pages out of order.
It's okay. I got it. There. Let me just pick them in the blue folder for you, or do you want them back?
Yeah, I think I want them. You probably, I'll take it up. Well, maybe, maybe we could have Mark scan it.
Okay.
Um, so along with that, now's the time. We have a due diligence period for us to do our review of the property and for that purpose, Roden Bridge and Selected BG Consultants, Inc. Be the engineer to help us with the review of the project. They have submitted a proposed agreement. I have looked it over. It is very similar to agreements we have about the past. Roger maybe has some comments about it, but I've, I've reviewed it. I don't have any, any problems with it.
I also sent Gabe, looked at and reviewed. I mean, I saw it since you got us, I mean, he's good with it, so.
He's seen this before. There was a draft.
Yeah, that's what I thought we said before.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have.
Yeah, yeah, we went through the selection process, select BG, right, and for the public, if we're just hearing about for the first time, that we went through the considerations and, and went through the correct steps to select. Right, selective engineers.
Pat, can you remind me when we did this with Stacy heading up the project at Solid Waste? Did, did, did she sign this as a client on behalf? Or do we, or do we as commissioners sign this? I was just wondering.
Tell you who did that last one. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter if the department that's going to sign it, it needs to be approved by the board.
Okay. I'm just wondering that way.
Be done either way.
Okay. Since she'll be the main point of contact, I just didn't know, would we approve him to sign this?
That's fine. I could, I could go either way, the commission or.
Okay. Alright, so I would look for a motion to allow Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent to sign the agreement for the consultant client um between BG Consultants and Atchison County, Kansas. To do the Atchison County Roden Bridge Maintenance Facility and Site Programming and Planning Services as presented by the county councilors.
Somewhere.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
It, it has a place for a printed name. I didn't put that in.
Alright, so I'll just you'll do that then.
Oh, then for, I mean, tell me what you want to do.
Christina's on.
Okay, I was wondering if, I just thought about that. Christina, are you ready? We're a little ahead of schedule.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, so we have Christina Romine with the Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health for the twenty twenty-five appropriation requests.
So we are not asking for more than last year, just the same amount. And I presented you with the budget, the same format that we have presented it in previous years. And we are still working on doing a lot of things in Atchison. Megan is in school to be an RN. She's your county health officer, and our agency is paying her tuition to get that RN so that she can continue to serve Atchison County. And we, they are working on a lot of new programs and things that they want to do as far as community engagement and things like that, and then we, of course, continue our normal services, so. I don't really have a lot else to add and am open to any questions you guys might have.
So as of last Tuesday, did you send your packet in with the information that the finance director requested? Okay. Sorry, um, did you send that to us? Sorry. The one with project concern said.
It's after that.
Okay. Nope, I found it. Health Department in June. Sorry about that. Okay, I got it. So, oh, just the budget. Okay. Does have any questions?
No. I don't have any, thank you.
No, not it.
Okay. Alright, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thanks, you too. Alright. So we're ahead of schedule. Joe, you're next.
Okay.
Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent, Culver and Low Water Crossing. Bid opening.
There were no bids, and I would like to ask if we could extend that two more weeks.
Okay, I've got a question on that, because we, have we set, changed our meeting on, that would be April fifteenth? Have we set that up to actually change that? Okay, so that would be.
So we will change, well, I will change the dates to.
To April fifteenth, if we're gonna, if you were still gonna do two weeks.
Yes.
Because that's something that we need to really watch is when we get these when they come in and if we change the date.
Alright, so if you guys are are good with that, we will do that. It's something that needs to be done, and we'll see maybe if we can get, I had one person say that they didn't get it done, so. Maybe we'll get some other people opportunities to, to bid again also.
So it's under two weeks is that?
That's, I don't think that's gonna hurt anything. If not, then we're gonna have to figure out a way to get this done by the date it's needs to be.
Earlier, you had mentioned that the quick turnaround and that it needs to be done in June as maybe what reason that you didn't have some of the interest is two weeks too long?
Well.
I mean, if.
If we, maybe we go a week.
I mean, I, I, I don't know.
Can, and I'll just see, you know, and if that, if that person doesn't, and we don't get any more, then we know that we have to figure out a way to do it ourselves or or do it differently, but this was the FEMA project and uh with the way they went with everything, uh part of this is on them. And part of it is, we couldn't at the time get an engineer to get this done. Uh, but since we've signed on, the county engineer has helped tremendously. So.
I mean, it was just a thought, because I know.
No, and maybe that is the way to go, just one week. And get that.
If you can get some bids, do it in a week and part of that.
Alright, let's, let's do that. So that would be April ninth.
Yeah. You're gone that day? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'll be in DC. And I thought I'd be able to zoom in a part of it, but I'll be sitting in Senator Marshall's office.
Maybe you should.
In this Senator Moran's office, so my, my Houston appointments are boombah, so it's just kind of picking me out quickly.
Okay, uh, the bridge P O's for the bridge were, first of all, I I was better get up here and sort of. For inspections on M point oh twenty-six four on the deck repairs and overhang is twelve thousand dollars.
This is for rendition of this bridge.
Yes.
Okay, I have a purchase order as presented from a Roden Bridge Superintendent to Schwab Eaton for twelve thousand dollars for the construction observation for M dot zero dash twenty-six dot four deck repairs. This is for the Independence Creek Bridge.
So this is for the.
It's for the deck repairs. I said both. I will talk today, but I, I think we can get it worked in, but I will talk to him about the overhang. So this is a deck, just the deck repair.
This is deck repair.
And this bridge was built nineteen eighty-five. So it's a little older than what I thought, but it's still relatively for us. Yes, yes.
And do I have a motion to approve this purchase order?
So move.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Alright, and the other is uh for Schwab Eaton Construction Observation for M point oh twenty-six four bridge rail collision damage repairs. We had a wreck uh a little over a year ago. They hit the uh concrete sidewall busted it out and busted product, part of the deck, and the engineering for that is eight thousand dollars.
Is this covered by the insurance?
Yes, it should be. We're gonna turn it in there.
I have a purchase order as presented from the Roden Bridge Superintendent Schwab Eaton for eight thousand dollars for the bridge rail collision damage repairs on Independence Creek Bridge and dot zero dash twenty-six point four. I have a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
And so everyone knows why we were doing that. We wanted to do some deck repair. And I went and looked here a little bit ago. Some of this stuff was apparent in two thousand fourteen. But we're fixing now on the deck. And uh the original part B of this. Contract was fifty-five thousand two hundred and fifty with Comanche Construction of Ol- Olatha, Kansas. And after further chaining and observation, uh. There's an additional fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and eleven cents worth of work that needs to be done on the deck. So the total PO would be one hundred and eight thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents.
And this is for the underneath.
No, that's the deck.
This is the deck.
This is.
This is the additional on the deck.
Okay.
One was the engineering.
Yep, one was engineering.
One was for the actual deck repair.
And we haven't approved that originally.
We have approved the consign a contract, but we have not had a PO for it yet.
Okay.
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 So the contract was, has been approved.
For the fifteen-two fifty, so what we're approving is the additional.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from a Roden Bridge Superintendent to Comanche Construction. For the additional deck repairs in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and eleven cents. That will be added to our original. Contract amount of fifty-five-two fifty for a total of one oh eight, six, eleven, eleven. I have a motion to approve. Okay, move to seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
And I have another PO of same bridge on the overhang. Where the concrete is starting to pull off the bottom side of the overhang with Comanche Construction. An estimated cost of ninety-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. That would be up for discussion with you guys on whether you.
Okay, so just to clarify, Comanche Construction is on site fixing the damage from the accident that's being paid. The deck repairs.
Yes.
And then in doing that, they went underneath the structure and found the flaking of the concrete.
Right.
So the concrete will flake off, exposing the rebar that would then damage the rebar. So their. Proposal is to go underneath and to fix all of the underneath.
So, so this was through the engineer. Uh Dave Beach with Schwab Eaton had looked at it. And this was one of the things that while they were there, if we wanted to fix this, this would be. You know, a, a time to save mobilization, traffic control and all that, because most of that's there. There would be some mobilization of like eleven thousand dollars for them to get a truck in there where they could get underneath. Now where the damage to, from the car accident, they're gonna be underneath there fixing part of that tube. Separately, that's all separate, but then that's where all the other damages where the concrete's fallen off. All the way down through.
And this was apparent in twenty fourteen for the bridge inspection?
Yes.
Okay. And it just was never fixed.
It's never been fixed.
Okay.
Sure it's worse than it was, I mean.
Yeah, and it's like the deck repair, some of that was there in two thousand fourteen and they've just been, been covering it up and covering it up and covering it up, so.
And the engineer feels this cost estimate is.
Yes.
Okay, is relevant to the work that will be done and the engineer will be there from the beginning to the end to make.
It will be a, it'll be a. A uh not a resident inspection, but will be there when they're pouring concrete and doing things like that. They, they go in, they check. To make sure everything's the way it's supposed to be.
And then this will be updated on our bridge inspection to the.
Yes, all of this will go into the bridge inspection in the, in the, it'll go into the portal and then we will also put it on our, our information.
Okay.
But yes, it will.
So as much as having um. Unintended cost as such, also when we find a problem and we're already there, I feel like it's in the best interest. To fix the problem and move on um. Otherwise, we're kicking things down the road and then it's gonna be a problem, so.
It's gonna be done now.
Right, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order. Presented by the Roden Bridge Superintendent to Comanche Construction. For the work that was identified during the routine deck repairs and correction of the um. The wreck that we just approved. So the overhang repairs, which is the underneath crumbling of the concrete off the bottom of the bridge. And the amount of ninety-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, I will second. And for real quick discussion, this is. You have this in your budget that it'll be paid for, okay?
If under discussion, then I'd just say, I, I know it needs, it's identified. I know, I'm just, I hate. This point in the year, spending that extra. With all the projects and things that we have going on. And so mine, it's not that it's not needed, it's just that the timing of it to me. Yeah, I just have a little different look at it.
A hundred percent, and I appreciate the conversation because I'm the same way of like, I don't want to spend it, but when you're already there. And you know it's a problem versus putting it off and then having to do the whole thing again of identifying a scope and getting.
RFPs.
Yeah, RFPs and, and the engineer being able to verify that this is the cost that it's gonna take to do it. Makes me feel better of the due diligence of not just someone doing a change order and trying to make a, a buck, so.
Right, and, and I've looked at the budget and crunched the numbers and Mark. Was in there Monday, yesterday with us looking at everything and, and we think we can make, we can make this work, so. But I do have the same concerns Eric has, you know, this is early for all this and then something else comes up. But at the same time, while we're here, if we can, if we can find a way to fix it.
I don't own the bubble, but.
No, no, I, I understand.
Good point of views.
It's, it's uh, it, it opens your eyes and you've got to really look and make sure that, that uh we're doing the right thing and, and making it work.
Yeah.
Go ahead and fix it. My concern if we wait, we're gonna have a higher cost because of mobilization.
And it will take two or three weeks longer to do it, but then we run into the same thing of closing the bridge again. Uh.
And that's a major.
And that's a major artery and, and there's people not happy about it right now, but uh that does save closing it again.
It's bad during the planning season, it's worse during harvest, so I think.
Right, so, but that's. That's where we're at.
What are the dates of closing now? How long?
Oh, they had so many, I'd have to look at the contract. They had so many days to have the work completed, but then this.
This adds on.
This will add on, but they've been going pretty good, so hopefully. I, I think they've been there a week. So is this the second week? Yeah, this is the second week.
Okay.
So, so they're, they're, they're doing alright, so.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Alright.
Passes two to one.
And then as far as an update. Uh, that project's going on. We're gonna be meeting with the county engineer next week on culverts. Try to get some culverts replaced on Ottawa Road, so when that project starts next year. Uh those culverts are replaced and can have a way, any work we can do there to get done. Uh. April fifteenth, I have to have my engineers report in. I talked to Michelle yesterday. To give them the townships till Monday to get there, the eighth to get their information into us so we can get all that entered. Uh. We're working on River Road. We've got the. Culvert that I called Big Safe Sin on three fourteen that uh we'll be working with, trying to get that, that job. Uh completed, so. Uh just normal everyday repairs. They're patching when we can. Right now, most of us are on River Road trying to get that done. So anybody have any, any questions or?
You got your, your planks stocked up and you're.
Yeah, the bridge planks are stocked up, but uh then I was supposed to have. Heard from the uh townships by April first on their two borders and I've heard nothing. And then I think, did you not ask the townships to have any, if they had any uh recommendations for our road plan? To be in by April first.
You know, we said that at the meeting.
Yeah, so I haven't heard anything there. Have you? The only thing that uh Pat and Roger and I are working on, and I think you guys, I don't know if we've sent that to them yet, that. The road classifications and names. So what I wanna do is with that. Marry that with our road plan, so it's easier for everybody to understand.
Right.
The terminology is the same on both. And I did get something back from the state yesterday uh on. The functioning class of the roads, an email. You know, I had those two questions on those two short pieces of road I didn't understand, so I got an email back from them and they're gonna be redoing all of that here. In the near future, so I thought I'd bring that up before I forgot, Pat.
May I ask a question about that? Because since I was trying to think about it throughout the week from last week um. We had talked about identifying the roads that we know are labeled through our township meetings. These are township roads, these are county roads, and the thought was to put them on a resolution. Was that correct? And what is the purpose of the resolution? I just want to understand because with. I understand it from our, our inside of like, if somebody comes in, this is your master list that you look at, but why? What's the purpose of having it as a resolution?
Okay, so we've talked.
First of having just the master list in your offices.
So we've talked to all the townships.
Okay.
We know, talked to our neighboring counties.
Okay.
We know whose road responsibility is whose and what roads are in the system. Those are the roads. So if we adopt those roads, then these questionable areas. They're not roads, they're not being used. They haven't been used for a long time. We've, we've set in stone or we've drawn a line and saying from this point forward, these are our. Roads.
Okay.
So when there's a question comes in, we will know, everybody knows what the roads are. That would, that the commissioners have adopted. This over here may be a driveway, so when, when those people come in and talk to us. We already know whether it's a road, and then there's gonna be a set of questions that uh Roger and I and Pat, I think has been involved in some of it. That this is the steps we go through to find out if it's a road, if it's not a road. And in those individual circumstances, what we brought to the commission. For to define whether it's, you're gonna adopt it as a road or what we're gonna do.
I have a good question. This is probably for a Pat question. If we adopt that, does that? Give any um. The word for is, if someone would come in and say, oh, well, it's. Because they passed this, my road is not on there, there, any legal standing that. That maybe it had been a road, but now it's declared by passing this and now it's declared it's not a road. That there's no more, I see what I'm saying?
I don't think we're doing that. I think primarily what we're doing is giving a baseline for the public. And for county staff to know, these are the roads that we're aware of. If we find good evidence that there's a road that we missed, either way, that's something that we have on the map isn't really a road. I think that it could be changed. But I think those changes would come back through the commission.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing something unintentional by setting a precedent that. It's not listed, it's not a road because you passed this.
No, no, that's, that's not the.
Because that's what some of the constituents want to like, well, why are you, what's the point of this? What, what, you know, and if there's a road not listed. And, and they use it and they, you know, the previous township trustees have taken care of it. But maybe it's not listed on our, what's the process?
And that's, that's what we're gonna work through and bring to you guys before this is all done.
And your process will mimic what the township's process would be.
Well, we're hoping that that's how that works.
Well, just asking, so if a road isn't listed on our, what we're adopting and it's historically been taken care of by a township. Um.
If it's been, if it's been, if it's been historically taken care of. Then we should have that information because we've talked to every township.
Okay, so.
But there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee that it's gonna be perfect. Like Pat said, we can do some changing. If it needs to be done, you know, but uh.
And I guess when I say taken care of by a township. Whoever the township board is takes care of certain roads, and when that changes, sometimes that changes. So just identifying those, there would be a process for them of this isn't listed on the maps or any of the historic data we have. There is a way we can. Add it to the list if the township.
And then it, it also, if it's, if it's not a road, then that ultimately comes to you guys to uh. Bring it up either from a. Minimum maintenance road to a road or the other. It's ultimately the commission that would do that, but there will be steps. That we go through on this process that will line it up to where it's the same for everybody. It's all the same steps. We do it, you guys will know the steps. It'll be a uniform for the county to also help the people within the county. Know where we go, how the steps go. And each step progresses to where if it needs to go to the commission and it goes to the commission. But that way, everybody understands all the taxpayers and everybody within this uh organization that deals with it. Where we start with it and where it ends up and those steps in between.
And just because a road doesn't make our list, doesn't.
Doesn't mean that it, doesn't mean that it couldn't possibly be a road.
Okay.
You know, so, but those are things that, that we've been working on and we'll continue to work on, and when we get them ready, then we'll bring it. To you guys so we can move forward with it. And if there's, if we need a uh workshop to do that. We can have a workshop to go through it and we can answer a lot of those questions, or if you want to do it in a regular meeting, we can do that too. But uh we're just not quite ready to bring that to the commission yet.
But as far as any. Constituents taking responsibility of roads or bridges that aren't on our list, we're not saying any of that.
No, that, we will, we will be addressing all of that when we bring what. All this to you guys.
Okay, so we'll have.
Because we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to answer those questions, but it's something that's gonna take a group effort to, to get to that point. Because there are those, there are those, you know, the road hasn't been maintained for twenty years and there's a, a. A county facility there and why is it if the road hasn't been maintained, who's is it? So those are some of the things that will have to be. Answered on an individual basis also.
I think we go ahead as a county and approve our end if the townships aren't on board yet, maybe by meeting by example. They see that's not the big boogeyman that maybe they, some might think it is to have this, at least on our end. And then as, then it becomes more visual, you can access it and see the documents and things, they might come on board.
Would you like to add some to this, Roger?
I think you're doing a, I think you did a good job of presenting that uh, the, the whole idea is. We just need a basis from which to start because right now, we have a lot of people who come in on a regular basis and say. Your map is wrong, it doesn't include this. And we want to get to the point where we say, well, we have a basis for what we have. And, and it's not an accident. We worked on it for years and years and years. I will tell you for at least seven years, we went to the. Township meetings and we said, show us what you got. They would put them on there and then we'd give them back a map of it and then they would say, oh, that's not right, and they would fix them. And they would fix them and they would fix them and they would fix them and we did that for probably five years. We just got them fixed almost every year. And then it got to the point where there wasn't really something to fix. Now we are at that point where it's important to understand when trustees change in a township, just like we had. The new trustees come to us and say, what do we maintain?
Yes, sir.
And so it's a difficult situation for them when we don't have a database that says, here's your job. And, and that is what I'm saying to you is if we adopt these, the county is essentially the purveyor of all of this. And the townships maintain these portions and the county maintained these portions. When we started this. There were over three hundred and fifty segments of road that either nobody claimed or more than one person claimed. And by the time it's through, and, and you think, well, this is really simple. Well, it's not. If you're on the line in between two townships. Which one maintains it? Just like we have with the county and Jackson and Leavenworth and Brown and Jefferson and. And Donovan, uh there needs to be and they have agreements between each other and. Joe just had a call a week or so ago on Allen Road where the guy said, well, you maintain this and. Joe said, well, actually, our database shows that, uh, that your people told us you maintain that section. And so it, it helps so much having this base.
Because that way for folks following along, they can hear and. We know because we're on the inside of, that there's a need for it, but just understanding the concerns of. If there is a road out there that's not labeled, that had a township taking care of it. They can still go to that current township board and, and have that conversation. And the board can always come to the county to add it to the list, correct?
Absolutely, and, and actually, they can come straight to us, because what we will do is. We will take a look at it and say, why wouldn't this all? Uh, we've got a series of things that we do and it's not a direct one. But it's a number of things that we do that we look at, it's not like, oh, let's go to the data and see exactly what it says. It's, we go here, 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 we look for whatever evidence we can find. And at some point in the game, we say, either, there's great evidence on this, there's good reason for this to exist, or we got nothing. Or we might say, well, there's a little bit in here, but not enough to say. In any of these cases, any of the three, I think it's good to be able to bring it back here. With a recommendation and say, yeah, put it on there, it should be, or no, it shouldn't. And you need to go through the process to get it done, or just like we're doing right now with one saying. You know, that, that area of Trigo Road, only the first six hundred feet was even on the map. And now we're coming back and saying, okay, with sufficient driveway and the improvements. Now we'll take it out of this status, put it in this status, and it's going on, and it, I know it seems like a lot of work. But it's how we keep that database good. And that database is important, as crazy as it sounds, because there didn't used to be one. And you had them come in and say, well, we maintain that because there are three houses on it, and we go, yeah, but it's just a driveway. And so.
No, absolutely, I.
I used to have an attorney tell me, the biggest way to get yourself in trouble as a government employee is to spend public funds on that. Now, if that's the case, then I wanna know where I'm gonna spend it and where I'm not.
And I think that's the, been the trustees. Making sure they're doing what's, what's right.
And here's part of this whole thing also, okay? So we're going through there, Roger's got most of it drawn up. Here's the process, we all understand the process, it starts here. So if someone comes to me, I say, you need to go here, or if somebody comes to Roger. And he'll say, hey, Joe, this person came, I'm gonna have him do this, so that there's no. And you guys can tell him the same thing, here's our process, once it's been adopted, you guys are good with it, here's a process, this is how we do it. And there's, you're not having to answer a question that you feel uncomfortable or you don't know the answer to. If we go to the process, we start the process, we go through the steps of the process, then that information can be brought to you. To where you can understand what we came up with and a dec- decision can be made. So the process is to help everyone in, within the county and, and the taxpayers. Understand this is a process, this is the way we do it, because right now, they go to you, they go to you, they go to you, they, you, they go to me. And it's a, it's a mess, and now if we have a direction to send them, that should make a lot of this. Uh, a lot easier to come up with a, an answer of what, what they're wanting to know. It, it may not be what they like, but at least there's a process.
Right, and, and understand eighty-five percent of the people will follow the process and do just fine. There's gonna be fifteen percent who just won't ever understand, and they're still gonna go some other way. Uh, that's just the way it is, but this is not a, you know, you used to think, wow, this happens how often, once or twice a year, and it's not that. It's almost a weekly occurrence that somebody's coming in and doing this, in most cases, there's no basis. We just say, we don't have anything.
Well, it might help us by putting a resolution and having a record that people can. Look at and refer to of like, hey, I know this, and then start, come to the process and help us identify them. Cause I, I was with you the first two township meetings two years ago, when they were highlighting your maps, you know? I, I witnessed the efforts, so if, if they miss something, then.
That's like what Roger had talked about, we, the USD three seventy-seven came to us. Uh, are you gonna take care of this portion of the road? Well, it showed it was a different county. So Emily had talked to everybody in every county, she had documented it to the day and who she talked to. So I approached that county and said, hey. This is what we have, and he said, well, I don't think we're supposed to take care of it, and I said, here's the date, this is, well, that person no longer worked there, but. They stood by.
That's good.
What it was, and it's, it's because we haven't taken care of it since, uh, since I've been here at all, so. But those are the things that, that we do try to do that's to, uh. Yeah, I forgot, I.
Do you wanna sign these before I put them in to be scanned?
And then I have one more PO, this is on the two thousand nineteen Mack truck. Uh, for nine thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. It had to do with, uh, the suspension being wore out on the rear end of the, the truck. And, uh, an inspection. I was wanting to get it, but taking care of it if I could. It should have been built out in three different things, it was down there. And they built it all out as one, so. It's above my.
In this rear suspension, you said? Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve the purchase order to next train for nine thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. As presented by our road and bridge superintendent for the two thousand nineteen Mack Granite Truck eighty-one for truck repairs. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
So we're gonna do the resolution on the roads in the next few weeks.
We'll, we'll work on it as soon as we can get that moving on.
Sorry.
All right, Stacy Wagle, Solid Waste Manager, Scale House Trailer Sealed Bid.
Scale House. Scale House to sell.
Oh, say, oh.
I'll listen. This one?
I just.
Um, two hundred and seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
Who's the bid from?
Jody Goodpasture.
That's the only one?
Yeah, that's the only bid I got.
I don't know what we do next.
Is your recommendation to accept the bid? Presented?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, so I'd look for a, a motion to approve. The Scale House Trailer Sealed Bid in the amount of two hundred and seven dollars and fifty-six cents to Jody Goodpasture, so I have a motion to approve. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Thank you.
So what do I do next?
Congratulations. Scale House owner.
I'll have, I'll have a contract, but I forgot about it this weekend, so.
Hey, so I, I also brought up a requisition, we were in the, had it approved in the budget this year for a new truck. For a new semi for our recycle truck. And we, uh, approved fifty thousand dollars, but we found one at Arrow Truck Sales for thirty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty. It's in Saint Louis, so for six hundred and fifty dollars, they'll bring it to us. Our site even, not, not in Kansas City, so I went ahead and added that, cause I thought, I felt like that was still a good deal. That's why I brought Jody, he can tell you anything you wanna know about the truck, he's whole stock to the, yeah, yeah, just the semi.
Does anyone have questions for Jody about the two thousand eighteen Freightliner Truck Tractor?
So like when you're having it transported, does that's insured to their company until they get it on your site?
I didn't ask that, but. Till they get it to us, it would be.
I, I would assume that, I've never had anything transported, so I don't know.
Why they're clear from Saint Louis, that's a pretty good.
Yeah, that's not a bad price, but I wanted to make sure that, that that included, that it was covered.
Right, the last semi that we bought came from the same place, and we were real pleased with it at Arrow.
Right, I'd look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from the Solid Waste Director to Arrow Truck Sales for thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars for two thousand eighteen. Freightliner Truck Tractor, um, delivered to our site in Madison. Have a motion to approve?
I'll second with, I wanna ask a question. Uh, is this got DEF on this?
I'm sure it does, this is the eighteen, so.
How, do you have any, uh, with DEF on them now, I mean, or?
Not our, not our semis, but both of our, we were picking, so.
Okay, I just, have you looked into that because with low mile, you don't use it a lot of miles? Is that gonna be a problem, do you think?
I, I don't think it would, I mean, I, I don't see where it'd be a problem.
Okay, well, I just wanna, I didn't know whether you investigated it at all, I mean. I think for the price, it sounds like a, a. But I, I just wanted to. Kind of throws.
It's different, yes.
Low mileage, uh, and I don't know if you probably don't use it every day.
Well, we'll probably hook it to our trash trailer, I'm guessing, so it'll be.
It would be.
Yeah, every day and, you know, we'll probably pull two, three trailers, you know, a day, so.
Now you're replacing it for, or you're keeping the other one?
We're replacing one, we have two, one for the trash and one for the recycle. And we're replacing the one that's actually on the recycle one now, but since this is a new one, we'll probably put it on the trash to use more and bump the other one down to the recycle one.
So you're not getting rid of it?
Well, we'll probably sell the one we have on Purple Wave, yes, yeah, once we figure out Purple Wave.
And we just did.
Okay, yeah, we had asked about that, and we got a few other things to put on Purple Wave and didn't know if that was quite ironed out yet, but.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
I did have a conversation about what you sent me.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
And this is for Pat, I got this in the mail the other day. It's a customer that's passed away with an outstanding bill. It's a little stuff for him.
Yeah, so you, um, I made you aware of the feedback I got from the constituent on recycle. Um, items and F and M that there's been a lot that aren't supposed to be in the recycle, um, Ben, and so if you wanna talk about.
Well, um, I discussed that with the employee that works out there and. Reiterated what his responsibilities along that line are, and, uh, yeah.
What's being put in or?
Well, they don't break down the boxes, therefore, when the next person comes along, there's not room. You know, so they're not, it's not getting put in the way it's supposed to put, whereas the employee needs to be out there paying attention to that. And we had that discussion and.
I guess that's not as bad as contaminants.
Well, there's always gonna be something, there's always gonna be plastic bags, there's always gonna be. And, you know, if, if the employee is standing there watching that, you can deter it right then. And if not, we pick it out when we get, get it to the transfer station, you know? But it's always easier to do it right when they're putting it on, putting it in, and, uh. But yeah, we had a discussion about that and. That should get better.
You have your solid waste meeting this week?
I do, it's on Thursday, um, and then I'll be back next week with the annual. Review for the solid waste management plan, the only thing that's new in it this year is the tires. I wrote, you know, a couple paragraphs on that. Um, but they have to approve it before I bring it to you guys, so I'll bring it back up next week and I'll send it. So you can see it ahead of time.
Sounds good. Does have anything else for Stacy?
I don't. I got my budget ready, but I'm, I'm, I'm one of the last ones, so. I can move up if I had to, if anybody wanted to switch places with me. Cause after Thursday, my committee will approve it and I'll be done. So. If anybody wants to switch with me, I'd be okay with that, cause mine's the thirtieth.
Thank you.
You got that extra two hundred and seven thousand, or no, two hundred and seven dollars, yeah, not two hundred and seven dollars.
I would have to have asked how to make one.
Oh, I know. That's a, that's a valid statement, so what does as good as that amount? See, I'll see how to print one of those, I have asked that in the past and they never hit me. But it would be the loads.
Stacy, one more thing, at your meeting, will you make sure and have some flyers and let the committee know about our cleanup day? Uh, or cleanup couple days, so that they can help promote it and take part if they want to.
I'll need a copy of that for you, or she kept it, okay, I just, I thought. I'll get it back to you, I got you.
When did I pay for that thing?
I've gotta get a very simple contract, but I'll try to get it to, uh, to her today.
Can you ask Austin about possibly the dumpster and Potter? Even if we put, I mean, it was full last year, I know there were some tires, yep, but they really utilized it. And it, that's a huge win, I feel like, is give them that resource, I mean. So, thank you. Awesome, thanks. All right, Scott Howard, IT Director, Civic Plus Renewal Approval. Yep, you had sent us the info and.
So it's just a renewal for the, that kind of website, um, typically every year. Uh, this year it's gone up by five percent, um, per our contract, as I stated in that email. It's really connect eight four hundred for a renewal for our services with Civic Plus.
I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from our IT Director to Civic Plus in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and four dollars and forty-seven cents. For our annual fee for hosting and support, um, and our SSL certificate annual fee, forty-eight month redesign ultimate. Annual Civic Engage Central, do I have a motion to approve? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. And if you could just sign this as department head and then I'll put it in the folder when we sign it and they'll scan it in. Awesome, thank you.
It's on the IT role, everything going well?
Everything's going well, um, keep them busy, I'm still working on the RFP for, um, the projects and for the, yeah.
Just Connor?
Yeah, it's Connor and stuff.
Okay, cool.
I'll hopefully have that in a week too.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have five minutes?
Sure.
Now, I don't know whether you wanna, you have something else you wanna talk about, that's fine. I need to, uh, restroom break in and I have to open up my car.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, no, we're ahead of schedule. We're, we have, we're twenty minutes.
Sorry, sometimes things interrupt.
Sorry, Mark, I have a quick question, it wasn't in the general budget, I kind of looked at the commission, but either way, didn't we budget for? The, um, United Way Breakfast?
Yeah, so we had, there was discussion to move into the appropriations list.
Okay, so it's under that? Okay, so.
In County General.
Okay, so, uh, Jennifer had reached out about it and I. Okay, so Jennifer had reached out about it and I, I told her I wanted to double check, but I was pretty positive that we had budgeted for it. So that we don't have to like, should we, should we not every year, it's like, it's in there. Do you, so would you like her to come and present again in person, she said she'd be honored, she has a great speaker lined up and. Thinks this year will be a great event, so she's good. Either way.
I need to waste your time, if she wants to, it's fine.
So I'll just confirm that it was budgeted, so the county is on board with the, with the sharing with the city. And if she'd like to get on the agenda, she can reach out to the clerk, how about that?
So I've got a couple things if you guys.
Do you wanna wait for Eric or not?
I can wait on that.
He said five minutes.
Till later on this afternoon, we're. Go to the shop and get your truck there, probably get a truck. Think Eric's just gonna follow us. Go his way home, but then they have changed it with his vehicles.
I don't know what all you guys wanna see.
What time's sunset? He's gonna rain while we're out there.
I know.
Almost hit it.
I know.
Might, might rain again by then.
Be nice.
They don't want any rain for a while, let them get their crops planted, it lets me get one main project and then. Then it can rain. We definitely need the moisture.
I've kinda lost not seeing patients ever seem to be at the office, used to get the update constantly, move the area, you know. Do what's going on, but I'm sure we'll bullet behind, I'm sure.
It'll probably start.
You take some railway permit forms out to. Office and that conservation officer.
No, we, we gave them my cards so people could talk to us.
I was just thinking, we have those permits included in there. Ask them to give us that as part of their packet when they're giving these.
Well, we could do that, so it's better to get on the railway, they have to fill out the utility. I don't, I don't know if we did. I was just wondering. Find out, because that is a good idea.
Yeah, that would be great, I think, include that in this email back.
You got it.
I have a couple things, I forgot one thing, the tractor that we have on. Commission be sold through can equip, we're not having a lot of interest in it, so are you guys good if we drop the price a little? Our pay, if, if we drop it, would be sixty thousand, he thinks he could get it going, we were offered forty-seven thousand in our trade. So I feel like anything over that forty-seven, I mean, I want as much as I can get, but.
What's that now?
He's got a list at seventy-seven, so ours would be around seventy, he's gonna drop it to like seventy-two or thirty. And then ours would be around sixty thousand.
That's fine with me.
But I wanted to bring that.
I can't, you'd manage that.
Well, I'm doing the best I can, you know, and, and I've been talking to him here and there and, and so, really, if we're not gonna move it, I need to know. What's going on here, so we had a nice talk and with that, and then also the Purple Wave, we are going through the shop again. And anything that's, you know, that's gonna take a while, but that we don't know what it is. You know, there's a lot of stuff that's still twenty years old, thirty years old, forty years old, with, you know, we're putting in. Pallets with boxes to be on Purple Wave. And then we have the lawnmower, the Gregory lawnmower from the. Delay that we don't use anymore, and I'm gonna put it on the, on the Purple Wave auction. Cause it's just, you know, it needs to go.
It's very old?
Yeah, it's got some age on it. And it, it needs, it needs some work, we've done a little bit, but it's, it needs to go. Let's see, is there anything else that's about all of that? And then that way, that'll kinda help us if we get this other thing going and get done, we gotta clean all that stuff out anyhow. We just will be cleaning it as we go. We sent a bunch of filters back to a couple places not too long ago that we don't need, that we had, that they would take back. And we're trying to manage that a lot better than what it has been managed. Even under my watch, we are really cracking now, I'm trying to get this stuff managed, the agreements with Caterpillar are really gonna help. We won't have all that on shelf, we go through MHC on our filters, we get a discount going through there with most of our filters. And making sure we don't have a lot of duplicates and, and. Making sure people aren't, what was, had gone on for years since I've been there is instead of looking at the shelves. People were disordering filters when we already had filters, the filters are very, very expensive. Very expensive, especially air. So we're kinda cleaning, trying to clean everything up and get it to where, when we make this transition, we won't have a bunch of stuff to do all at once. Then the other casey on this Olson. So is that a lease thing or do you know?
I don't know much about it, one department has responded that they would be interested in, in hearing from them, so. I, I don't know anything, they reached out to us three different times, I thought it was two, but I found three.
I had somebody reach out to me a year or so ago. And I think that they dealt with most of those counties listed, so maybe in the same person, so I mean, I would listen. If it's a day that, I don't have to look at my calendar and see what day I'm gonna be, cause there's some Fridays I'm not gonna be here, so.
Yeah, okay, well, and maybe it's one of those things like. If a few of you are interested, you guys get together and meet with them and see if it's worthwhile, you know what I mean? Cause it's nothing that the public probably, I mean, it's either gonna be a fit and cost savings or not, so. And for you guys to make that decision, not necessarily us, so.
Yeah, or at least they could bring up findings to you guys, if, if someone.
If you feel like, because I, I don't know that Tuesdays work for, for that. For that guy, so again, if, you know.
That's, that's all the extra, yeah.
We're just here for Katie sent us down for that person friendly.
Oh, Meredith.
Yes.
Okay, cool, we're a little ahead of schedule, so she's not quite here yet, but that sounds good.
One of, one of the smartest.
Did you tell everybody that what we did?
We, no.
We came in second place at the United Way.
I saw that, it's because I wasn't on your team.
We tied for first.
Then they had tiebreaker and we lost the tiebreaker. But we did well, that was awesome.
It was in the team. There were.
A bunch of school teachers.
It was teachers? Oh, I know. It's coming in second, quite as big an accomplishment.
They say you're the number one loser.
And if any of us had known that Joe Walsh was born in Wichita, Kansas, we would have won.
You taking a little one there, we got the question.
Well, if you got any question right earlier.
Well, that's true, there wouldn't have been a tie, that's true.
I hope that Mark's saying, who's Joe Walsh?
Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, my gosh.
And then the question, the answer was the Dolphin game, and all I could think of was the James game. Guess it's Joe Walsh, but that's, Katie Allen's dad got it.
I'm telling you, truthfully, between me and you and Janelle, I, that's who answered most of the questions, it was us three. Katie was just a seat filler, she, she fell through her word.
It's all Kansas, Missouri border stuff. What was the theme?
Kansas, there, Kansas, Missouri border wars.
I didn't make sure.
Joe Walsh was into the border war, but.
Well, they had people where they were from, from Kansas, Missouri.
That was, the one was really kind of a hard category, when they had, they had pictures, it was like three sheets of pictures and you had to, of actor, famous people. You had to name who it was, which was, that was relatively easy, but then where they were from in Kansas or Missouri. That was, you know, there's some of those wrong square towns, never heard of.
One of the people was Walter Chrysler. Would you recognize?
I thought it was Walter Conrad.
He was on. Walter Chrysler, well, I'd say he was from Omegle, I know there's a sign outside Ellis County that said, that he grew up in. Outside of, he grew up in Ellis, but. Idea. No clue. No, he's from Missouri. And there are a lot more Missouri people than they're working with, to choose from, I think. My mom was from Missouri, Saint Joe, we used to always. Tease, you know, it's like. Maybe I shouldn't say it, but the dumbest person from Kansas moved to Missouri and the IQ level went up in both states. She never did care about that.
It was border jokes.
Juvenile, I know. We've had fun with it, I've got a lot of first cousins up there.
We always tease Shelley still, you know, she grew up in I-ten Missouri, and we just tell her that she's from the hills, so she's a hill person.
Careful, I got family over there.
You do? So does my husband, so.
It's not right in I-ten now, but right next door. The right away permits. And I asked if we actually had copies of those permits out there at the, this called the soil office.
In RCS?
See, why, once they change that, I can't get it right. But he said he did not, he just had his cards, he was gonna get his actual paper forms, so if they give out, when contracts are gonna do the job, so at least there's an awareness. Yeah, that might help a little bit.
I wouldn't be able to.
Well, the price went up thirty-five thousand dollars. And they, well, right, and they thought. That was too much.
Oh, the one you took is to get, okay, they're not buying that either.
Guys, look at the K Camp. Info that they sent us.
I haven't really looked at it. About the committee?
Well, the, we had asked them how we compared other counties. Which that report didn't really say and tell you anything, it's just K Camp loss ratios by number of members, it doesn't show us. Where Atchison is and relation to others, but on the appraisal report. The Health Department. And they, I mean. I just, I guess. Value themed. Maybe I'm not familiar with what's all in it, that just seemed like a big number.
Oh, the value of the building?
And then also. The, the appraisal report, so we need to make. On the transfer station, need to make sure that they update the values of the scale house too. Well, just what you had sent us that we, we requested, which it didn't really. Give, you have much information of what you're looking for, but that's fine. Seven hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred dollars. Seven hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred dollars, that's exactly what I thought, I was like, uh. Not sure where they're coming up with their values, but.
The guy needs to be.
Um, he sent that, hold on, well, and even the buildings at the. Yeah, March twenty-first to eight thirty-eight, but even the values at our current shop out there, that's basically Paul. And like, what, these don't seem like. I, I think we should look at these, is what I'm trying to say. We should probably review this because it doesn't seem. Alright, Meredith, welcome. Hi, we're ahead of schedule today, so, yeah, no, no, you're not late at all, you still have three minutes, so, welcome. If you'd like to come up here, Meredith Doyle, the Service Learning Director at Benedictine College. She's going to explain the service learning program and that way, some of our department heads and department. They're interested, but didn't really know, you know, what it is and all the things, so.
Yep, so who, am I speaking to the three of you or just kind of everyone in the room or? Okay, great, so hi. That's fine, yep, so, and I can send, I have some physical copies of information, but I can send out some digital copies too that can be shared with everyone too, so.
I shared your email with the two events you're having, great, so I sent that to department heads. So this'll just kinda tie it into what it is, and then if they feel like they can benefit and you can benefit.
Great, it'll work wonderful, well, hello, everybody. My name is Meredith Doyle, I think I've met all of you in some capacity, great to see you all, so I'm the Director of Service Learning at Benedictine. Uh, just a quick background, oh, sorry, how much time should I limit myself to, I could talk on and on, but.
No, you're good, you have about fifteen minutes.
Oh, yes, that's great, so, um, let me just. You let me know when I have five minutes left if I'm still talking, so, um, so, okay, so just a little bit of background, so. Um, service learning as an official program at Benedictine has been around since twenty sixteen. But faculty have used, and I'll explain what it is in a second, but faculty have used this teaching methodology for, I mean. Five, ten, fifteen years prior to the official beginning of the program, but as far as an office and a full-time employee dedicated to this. Uh, it's been around for about eight, eight years at this point, so service learning is a teaching methodology that's available for faculty to use. Uh, and it's, it's an intentional incorporation of community engagement and work out in the, outside the classroom. Benefiting the community as a teaching method in the course, so it's very specifically integrated into the academic goals of the course. So as many of you know, we have a lot of service opportunities through, for example, our college ministry or athletic teams, clubs, et cetera. That are out in the community, doing a lot. that are out in the community doing a lot of volunteer work, and so, you know, we have all sorts of supports for that at the college, this is an additional support to continue to expand, um, our, our opportunities to, to be engaged with our community through, very intentionally through integration in the academic courses, so, um, and I have, I can share with you too, but just to kind of briefly, um, so we have, for example, uh, in our mass communications course, uh, about seven years ago, they reformatted their senior seminar experience to be a service learning course, so previously, the class, the seniors in that class would, uh, kind of develop their own, kind of create a company, not as, I mean, they would make up a fake company and kind of design promotional materials and websites, et cetera, for, for that fake company, and the professors in that department wanted to make it a little bit more, uh, real-life experience for them, so we've since then been partnering with organizations in the community, non, mostly nonprofits, but also some government agencies, some small businesses, um, for example, we, this semester, if I remember correctly, they're working with Sleep in Heavenly Peace, uh, you know, that's the program that builds bug beds, right, that's based at the college, um, the chapter is based at the college, and then, uh, Mount St. Glasgow, they've worked with CASA, that particular class has worked with CASA, that particular class has worked with the Archdiocese of Kansas City's Catholic Schools Office, and a number of other, um, projects, and they're doing whatever kind of to support, maybe they're doing some social media support, they're doing copywriting, they're doing just really what for the, kind of from the mass communications perspective, what does that organization need? So the students are gaining some experience, they're making professional connections, and then on the community partner side, they're able to get just a couple more hands, uh, kind of in the kitchen, right, and, um, also able to, uh, you know, be able to share more about their mission with some students at the college as well, so that would be just one example of more kind of behind-the-scenes type work, um, but it doesn't have to be related to the person's major, the student's major, and it doesn't have to be so kind of extensive as a sort of, that's almost more like an internship service learning, but we have students, for example, that are in an intro, very introductory level biology course, in fact, it's a biology course that's geared towards, uh, students who are not majoring in the sciences, so kind of, maybe, you know, the, the hard sciences aren't really their forte, right, but we wanna, as a liberal arts education, we wanna have them still learn about that, uh, you know, for example, the biology is, this principle is a biology course, so one of the sections of it, um, this semester and in previous semesters as well, it's happened where the students, you know, there's a section, a whole section about ecosystems and plant biology, and so the students are going over and helping with at Mount St. Glasgow, where they have a lot of pesticide-free gardening and really kind of water-sensitive gardening practices that the students are helping with that, and they're also helping even with some, um, doing some baking and kind of looking at even just kind of the, the cooking science, you know, and like yeast and all of that, so it's kind of, there, that would be one kind of simple example, right, but that's just, you know, kind of maybe an hour experience here and hour experience there, so smaller scale, but still, they're, they're assisting with something in the community, they're getting outside of the classroom, and they are benefiting the community while also being able to really encounter and apply that material that we're in the course. So we have that across the board, I support, uh, we have twenty-four academic departments, if I'm, remember correctly, and I, I'm available to work with all of them and have worked with about half of them over my time here, um, it's completely optional for faculty to incorporate or not incorporate in their courses, and, uh, there's no requirement at the institution at large that, okay, every student has to take this kind of course, um, but there's a lot of courses, a lot of majors that, you know, if you're studying education or art or mass communications, or, um, let's see if any others come to mind immediately, I mean, that's built into some of their coursework, so they would, there's no way you could graduate with that degree without having to do service learning, but others, um, it's just, we try to make it as available as possible, so, that's a little bit of the framework, um, and that experience outside of the classroom and the lectures and readings and those other assignments in the classroom are really bridged by intentional, uh, what we would call intentional reflection assignments or kind of analysis assignments that the students are really putting that into conversation, the, the material that they're learning in class and the experiences, um, out in the, in the community, so, okay, so all of that to say, my role is to help everyone involved do that and to do it better, and so, as a large part of my role, I spend time getting to know nonprofit agencies and, and government agencies in the area and schools, et cetera, to really just learn, hey, what is it that you folks, you know, what are some good learning opportunities here for students? Where are opportunities that students might be able to offer some, some real help, you know, we don't want anything to be a distraction or a kind of a burden where people are having to find work for our students, we really wanna find opportunities that our students can, can really step in and, and hopefully support in some way, recognizing fully that they are still very much learning, right, so they're not, you know, they're not gonna be able to be in a position to give kind of some, you know, multimillion-dollar marketing advice that an agency, you know, or that a multimillion-dollar marketing agency would be able to give, but they can be able to come in and offer some assistance, and also, really, we look to the community partners to be co-educators with us in that experience, so, so it's a little bit about the framework, um, and that, those partnerships can look really different from one to another, so we have kind of more, they tend to fall into two categories, kind of more behind-the-scenes type work, like that helping with social media maybe, or doing kind of maybe some curriculum, curriculum development for, uh, programming, uh, you know, an after-school program, or um, doing kind of maybe some market research type things that kind of more, like I say, behind the scenes, so they're not necessarily working directly with the clientele of that organization, and then we also have a fair amount of what you might call kind of direct service, like way maybe where they're helping, um, deliver the beds for Sleep in Heavenly Peace, so they're helping, you know, operate a food pantry with the operation of a food pantry, or they're helping with hanging out, you know, and, and tutoring with, at the Boys and Girls Club or at the Open Gym at the YMCA, I mean, so we have, um, a lot of ongoing partnerships with, with agencies here in the community, we really try to prioritize working in Atchison, um, Atchison County, like the Atchison area, as opposed to, for example, like going out to St. Joe or Kansas City, though, we, we do have partnerships there, but we really try to prioritize our local community, um, and so, yeah, so that's a little bit about it, um, I can, I do have some, uh, just, so as far as, I mean, I can provide to you all, I'm happy to provide digital copies for everyone joining, um, but we have um, just a little bit more information about kind of what it can look like from course to course and, um, what it looks like currently as far as numbers, so right now, both last semester and this semester, we have about twenty percent of our student body enrolled in a class that has a service learning component, and that can range from an optional one-hour, like where they can do that, they can do that one-hour optional experience, or, you know, read an extra book and write about it, everything from that to required, you know, forty, fifty hours for the, that's the course, is the service learning experience, so, that twenty percent is kind of anywhere, those twenty percent of students are anywhere in that spectrum of, of experience, so, so, yeah, so I, I have here, um, I only brought five copies, I apologize, six copies I suppose, um, but at least for one for each of the commissioners here, um, yep, just to give you an idea, has spring twenty twenty-four and fall twenty twenty-three, um, of what, I have two more copies if anyone would like one right now. Sure. Here you go. Anybody else? And I'll provide digital copies as well, but, okay, sure. Sure, sure, so, um, yeah, so just a little bit of information as you can see, right, so, um, just to give you a feel of the wide variety of courses, so for those, again, following along at home, um, we have courses in psychology, theology, psychology, business, education, exercise, science, biology, chemistry, uh, let's see here, sociology, art, theater, I mean, really just kind of across the board, um, and some of the partnerships that we've had, you know, this, kind of that first paragraph at the top gives some examples of just activities that are happening, uh, this semester, so, uh, you know, visiting residents at Vintage Park, um, we have, we've also had resident folks over at Senior Village, right, and, um, medical lodges, we have helped with the YMCA's biddy soccer program, tutoring, uh, students at Atchison Elementary, helping out at the classrooms at Atchison Childcare Association, working with, um, kind of a sort of quasi-mentoring, uh, partnerships at Atchison High School and Atchison Middle School, we've had students from, uh, Atchison County Community Schools, from their high school in particular, come over with, uh, Mr. Mitch Oswald and his chemistry students, they've come to our campus a number of times for uh, chemistry labs that we offer, so, um, we, yeah, we are eager and willing and excited to work with, um, our, our community at large to, uh, just help our students learn, learn from and alongside members in our community, so, so as, um, Commissioner Quinn mentioned, that we have some upcoming events, especially for anyone that's, you know, would like to learn a little bit more about this, on April eleventh, so not this Thursday, but next Thursday, from four PM to five PM on the Benedictine campus, we have, um, our, twice a year, we have an event called a Service Learning Or者的hour, and it's just really kind of very, essentially very casual networking hour, um, we have some nice food, and we have a lot of, a number of faculty that come to that as well, and a number of community partners, and it's just an opportunity to just visit and chat about, hey, like, so we're kind of looking for this, we're looking for this, and just see what partnerships might come up from that, um, so it's very kind of low, low commitment, there's no requirement that you have to like do something based on those meetings, um, but it's just really an opportunity to, and we really, you know, I, kind of as an informal role of my office, I really just look to be an opportunity to connect the community and the college, just, I mean, the formal scope is through these academic courses, but really, I mean, if there's, if you're like, I wanna maybe try to talk to some of the college, but I really just don't, you know, about whatever, but I really don't know who to talk to or reach out to, feel free to reach out to me, Commissioner Quinn can make sure kind of disseminate my contact information, I'm happy to connect you if it's not my office, but a different office on campus, and, and just see how we can continue to deepen this collaboration that's been going on for, you know, over a hundred sixty years at this point, right, so, um, we're all, we're all here in Atchison together for the long haul, and we, um, I'm happy to make that more fruitful as best I can in my role, so, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks might have, whether now or via email or phone later, so.
Maybe your service learning hour, it's really, it's really good.
Yeah.
This time, uh,
Yeah.
But you guys go.
Yeah. Yeah, we try to, you know, wine and dine you a little bit, and just also just, yeah, be able to provide opportunities to visit with people, so, yeah, we'd be happy to have you do again, so.
Awesome, yeah, we shared the information with department heads, and I think it'll be just then finding the fit or reaching out to your director to say, you know, these are my needs and this is my thinking, kind of that collaboration one-on-one, cause everybody does different.
Exactly, and I'm happy to, even if, even if there's nothing that occurs to you right now, but if you're like, maybe, you don't, I mean, I'm happy to just sit down and just, just meet you, right, so for everyone that's on the call, for everyone that's here today, like, I'm just happy to come and, um, you know, just learn about your facility, learn about your role here, um, and then even if something doesn't occur, you know, to me or to you right at that moment, but then we just establish that connection, and then, you know, if something occurs to you later, occurs to me later, because I regularly have faculty that'll like, like this past fall, there was a professor that wanted, that was offering service learning in an environmental economics course, and it's like, I don't even, I'm watching YouTube videos trying to learn, what is this all about? What is environmental economics about, I don't know, right, so, or, you know, environmental psychology, we have, um, recently, uh, within the past couple of years, Benedictine started a center for integral ecology, so there's been a number of additional courses, um, kind of geared towards, uh, you know, just ecology and integral ecology, eco-stewardship, et cetera, so, there's been a number of courses that, uh, are along those lines, so I'm learning about those interests and, um, so, even, so, uh, what I'm trying to say is, I don't, I don't know now what classes might be offered a year from now, um, for, that would want service learning, so, it's really, I try to just get to know just what, what are the learning opportunities at your place, what do you all like, what gets you excited, what, um, what do you maybe need a little bit of help with, or maybe you want some just even perspective or feedback on your social media, or what, just really, I'm happy to, to meet with you and to just, um, just establish, uh, some initial connection, and it doesn't have to really, really result in anything concrete, can just be, um, now we just have each other's business cards, so, yep.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Any other, yeah, questions? The other, I think the other thing was, if you, I don't know that we're working too closely with this semester with anyone from Atchison County specifically, but I think maybe the other thing that you were referring to, Commissioner Quinn, was, um, uh, if you, if in some other capacity, you're aware of a student, we, we, we have a service learning award that we offer to a student each semester based on a student who's gone really above and beyond, um, in their service learning course, so we're accepting nominations for that through, uh, April twelfth, so, um, if I'm missing someone and there is someone that you've worked with, a student this academic year, that you'd like to elect for that, um, you can see Commissioner Quinn's email, so, okay, yep.
Do you connect students with like, uh, Project, um, Atchison or Juneteenth or the year art festival?
Sure, sure, so, sure, so, I mean, so we have, um, of course, you know, two of those events, right, are over the summer, um, and are, we tend to have very few students at this point here over the summer, just our summer classes of tend to be more online at this point, from what I understand, but, um, but yeah, so, for example, we have, so, um, maybe I can mention this also, so we have, we at Benedictine, a platform that we use to organize service opportunities is called Give Pulse, some of you might be familiar with this, the Hoss Amberwell also uses this, I think with their employees and to put, put forth their volunteering events, um, but we have, and Project Atchison does too, so they have, for example, their upcoming Extreme, you know, Neighborhood Makeover, that's, I think the, what is it, the thirteenth and twentieth, maybe? Shout out to Project Atchison, um, so, we have that listed as an opportunity for, on our service learning, so, so we have, so on this platform, for example, we have different, for each class, we have its own little class page, and then I can put events that match with the course goals for that, so for a number of them, that Extreme Neighborhood Makeover is appropriate for the goals of that course, not for all of them, so it's not posted in all of those pages, but we have like a general page for Benedictine, just for students who are just looking for volunteering, even apart from service learning, but maybe if their athletic team, or they just wanna, they have, you know, wanna go help out, so that's, for example, listed on there, um, but as far as, um, so Muddy River would be during the academic year, and I don't know that we've connected with them yet, but I mean, we're more than, we're more than happy to, so, yeah, just kind of larger, yeah, so I mean, feel free, reach out, so, you know, we're, um, and I try to be proactive too, but also, uh, yeah, we've kind of, um, we, we have our hands full too, so, but we're, doesn't mean we can't take more, but, um, if I haven't reached out to you, my sincere apologies, and I'm more than happy to meet with whomever about whatever project, so, we try to focus on things that are kind of responding to kind of the criteria we talk about as human and community needs, so, kind of, they tend to be more sort of social issues oriented, or kind of like, um, in, in the Catholic tradition, right, we're a Catholic institution, what we might term as like the corporal or spiritual works of mercy, right, so, right, feeding the hungry, clothing naked, right, housing the, the unhome, the unsheltered, um, but we, I kind of, we broaden that too, I mean, like, it's not, it doesn't have to strictly be in those categories, and we have a lot of, you know, small businesses in town here, so, we tend to maybe not be as like closely connected with kind of larger corporations for the work that we're doing for service learning specifically, we, in our, in our career services, I mean, we're like, work with anyone and everyone to get opportunities for our students, but as far as for service learning, we're looking kind of for more, more along the kind of like small businesses, or like even more specifically nonprofits, government agencies, schools, um, not that we don't wanna, you know, be supportive of our, like, larger businesses as well, but, um, just as far as kind of what it's geared towards, kind of really responding to kind of the, uh, really like the, kind of, those, those human and community needs, like right here in our community, if that, if that makes sense, so, yeah, through that service learning, again, Jennifer Diddmore in our career services is, you know, ready and willing to work with anyone and everyone about, um, career opportunities at any kind of business or organization, um, for our students, but for service learning, we tend to focus more on like the nonprofit, small business type, uh, initiatives, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much, very happy to have you, thank you for the invitation, and, uh, yeah, happy to connect with everyone after this, or, again, open door invitation for the eleventh, so, thank you very much.
Yes. Did you send her contact information to Katie?
If she's on the department head email, then yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Then she's got it.
Great, wonderful, pleasure to be here, Tom, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Take care.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is Thomas from Juneteenth for the twenty twenty-five appropriation requests, welcome. How are you? Yeah, we can pull another chair up there for her.
I can sit right here.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and I think everyone, did you get the?
Yep.
All right, I am the chairperson, Nicole Thomas, and Donald Bratton Jr. is the treasurer, so, we're hoping we can just kind of let you know where we're at this year, and, um, hopefully answer any questions that you may have, this is our eighteenth annual Juneteenth celebration, we're so happy that we're continuing to go, to go along, and everything's been blessed so far, um, we have asked for, um, our two thousand dollars appropriation amount again for twenty twenty-five, um, we realize that you, you know, you cannot give more. We realize that you, you know, you cannot give more. I read that in the letter and that's fine. We're just hoping that, you know, as the time goes on, hopefully and praying that um, maybe it can get increased. It took a while. We asked, you know, the city, we had asked them for quite a while and we were at sixty-two fifty for a long time. And then finally this year, they finally granted us the ten thousand um, dollars and deducted from the um, equipment fee and things like that. So we're at, we get like nine hundred and something. So we're thankful for that. And we just continue to see if you guys will continue to um, support us as well. Okay, um, I did turn in the information for the IRS nine ninety um, and the bank statements, some of them I didn't quite have, but it did show you uh, basically like we do have some reserve money uh, put over for the next year, which is for this year, we had about four thousand seven hundred that went towards this coming year. So we do, we have had reserve money for a couple of years now. Well, while there was kind of rough. So um, our balance today is twenty thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Um, as you've seen on our budget form. We in the past years has been about like, I want to say twenty-two thousand to twenty-five thousand that it's that been actual amount. But as you see over the years, it's getting up there to like thirty, thirty-one thousand because of every, the increase. Everything's increasing, it's getting hard and pretty much more of our money is going towards equipment and uh, things like that instead of our, what we actually like doing is with our entertainment and with our um, uh, we're having a new parade this year where we're going to go through downtown. So we're trying to get more people involved. A lot of them will do it with charity, but a lot of them are asking for fees. So it's just not as easy as it used to be where people would just donate their time and all that. More people are now needing fees, travel fees. So everything's just getting costly. So it's just increasing every year. Um, the twenty-one, twenty-two, actual twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-one is sixty-eight dollars. Um, compared with last year's, which was thirty-one thousand, twenty-one dollars. So that was just like seven thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars, just increasing costs, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're dealing with. We want to continue to keep doing everything that we do do because it's important for us to give out to the community. What we have, we're, we're excited because things are getting better for us. We're starting to have, as you guys know, the county, we're starting to get more included with you guys. We're starting to get more with the city still backing us up. We have the Atchison Art Association now being a part of us. Um, Datsun United, um, they are uh, starting to help us out a lot more. Um, uh, did I say that? It's an art association, Datsun Cultural Assist, uh, uh, Cultural Center. We just got a lot more people coming towards it. We're starting to get more focused. People are starting to learn about Juneteenth more. So this is really important for our community, for us to continue to do this and have all the support. And we just financially just need the help. Um, our accomplishments, as we told you, um, our statewide Juneteenth celebration event winner, that was really wonderful from Topeka, Kansas. Like I said, we joined with Datsun County with the Lincoln statue dedication. Um, the Ash United brought in Dr. Brian um, from Detroit Museum. He came over with the flyover. We um, went out there to the Amelia Earhart Airport. Um, and then the Asian Art Association did poet, poetry contest. All these things are accomplishments for us. And our aspirations for this year, we are trying to uh, collaborate with the Asian Cultural Center, recognizing the local artist, Dwayne Anthony. He's going to be recognized for the first local artist in Atchison, Kansas. We're going to be a part of that. Um, we're going to try to do our first parade through the downtown area where we kind of start down there by the river and go through uh, Kansas Avenue up Eighth Street to the park. So that's going to be exciting for us as well. And it's kind of like an old Patty and Sonia awesome with the history and it's kind of like an old route that the Juneteenth used to do years ago in Atchison, Kansas. They used to have a Juneteenth parade years ago in eighteen hundreds. And so we're trying to replica that. And so we're excited about doing that. Um, those are the things that we're trying to work on besides our usual things that we normally do, which you all probably already know. Um, how we have the parade, we have a top speaker that comes and this year we're going to have Angela Bates from Nicodemus. Um, who's going to come and do history and that's a real big, we're so excited to have her come because she can give a lot of information about the black history to a lot of people that don't even know, just like me, I'm going to learn too. So it's going to be wonderful to have her here. Um, we do the uh, Black History Trolley Tour, which a lot of the buildings are already gone from Atchison, but Janet Smith does a good uh, she's a good narrator to tell everything about what used to be in Atchison. We do our fun attractions like the bingo, the inflatables, uh, bands, our famous cake walk. Um, just all kind of good things. And then on Sunday, of course, we always give our um, Heavenly Father the blessings for letting us continue. So we have our non-denominational worship service on that day as well. And so we're just looking forward to all that. We continue to try to keep that going. Um, I did want to let you know, there was a question of um, about the um, Accent Area Community Foundation. Wasn't aware of that. Donald, I think he's aware of that a little bit and said he was going to be looking into.
I'm on the board, so he and I can talk.
Okay, that sounds good.
I can get you straightened on that.
That sounds good.
That's something.
Cause once you're on there, it's uh, we have that match day every year and you'll, you'll raise money that way.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm just not finding out about it. And I consider that my fault, but at the same time.
Well, we're a young foundation.
Yeah, that's where I understand.
Forty-one, forty-two funds in there now.
I think that match day really helps because it's just top of mind for people and really easy for people to just go on and help the community. And you might not even know, you know, who, who is donating, but it's just, it's, it's very helpful.
And that's just kind of like a fundraiser.
Would I contact to, to be a part of it?
For United Way?
Who would I contact?
Jennifer Maxwell is probably a good start. Jennifer Maxwell.
Okay, okay. A product of Benedictine then?
Well, she's, she has Thrive It.
Okay, very good, great.
Yeah, and so that's where we at is organization, organization donor based on or do any fundraising activities, which I know a lot of you guys already know that we do do our own fundraising activities as well as our sponsor sheets and everything, asking people for donations. So we do both. And like I said, we um, we are doing our fundraising, but we are getting older. We're trying to get young people involved, but as you all know, Atchison, it's hard to get young people involved in things. So we are, we're doing the best we can. Uh, we've kind of been short on our fundraising uh, this year because just illness and different things going on. So, but we are doing a bingo and a, a beat Philistine mac and cheese challenge with Eric. I don't know if everybody knows about Philistine mac and cheese, but it is awesome. And I don't know if anybody gonna beat it, but she's so excited to have this fundraiser going on. So that's the Saturday and the bingo. And then we are going to, we always be included in community things. So we're going to be at the farmer's market. We do that every year. And um, um, it's like there's something else I'm missing, but we do do different fundraising activities around the community. So we are involved as much as we can be. Um, and like I said, a lot of our sponsorships, which I do believe I sent information of where our funding sources come from, you know, basically all the people that pretty much help us so we can accomplish what we want to do. So all that's on there. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add.
Nothing, other than we consider you guys a main donor. And that's how we can keep it free. It's because people like you that love and give so kindly out of the goodness of your heart. What we want you to understand, in the grocery stores and everywhere in America, everything goes up. Everything goes up. So we have to ask people to give, be more diligently giving in their donations. But so that we can have all these things and keep it free. Uh, emancipation proclamation, what does it proclaim? Of freedom. It's no different than July the fourth, other than one is was established in seventeen seventy-six. One was established in eighteen sixty-five. Okay, so what we're asking for is for you to just continue to be with us. Love us. It'd be different if we got paid. We do this out of love. Uh, we don't get paid for this. We do this out of love and it's for community. It isn't for blacks only, it's for black and white. You've been there. Uh, you've seen, and you all, you all know that this isn't just a black thing. That's one thing that I try to get. Uh, so that everybody realizes it's for everybody. We are America. We are a melting pot. We really need your support. Anything you can do to help us in our endeavors, we really appreciate you. But ours is a show of love. And we just ask you to just join along with us and help us in any way possible. And we know that you will. Thank you so much for having us, listening to us, understanding us, because this is a loving charitable thing that we do. It isn't anything personal. Nobody asks for any glory or anything else. It's just a gift of love to the community. Thank you.
One thing I picked up on this year, uh, me not knowing my history, uh, to me, Juneteenth has been relatively new. Growing up, I had not heard about it. And then maybe the last twenty years is, is, what then you said that they had a route back in the eighteen hundreds. I didn't realize they actually had organized celebrations back then of Juneteenth. To me, it seems like a relatively new, new thing, whether it fell out of favor and.
Started in Texas. Started in Texas.
That's when, well, that was actually when the last bashes of, of slavery found, they found out that they were actually. But I, I didn't realize that it was organized celebrations for, you know.
Cause Patty and Sonia were, they've been really looking in the history.
They did the history. We call them the Snoop System.
So we're finding out things too, you know, that we didn't, we weren't aware of. So. And speaking of that parade, that's what I had told you, Dr. Rebus and um, Chairwoman. We are wanting to see if you guys might be included in the parade, because we're going to ask the city, we're going to ask the county to back us up. Remember I said I wanted to try to get everybody included? And that would be awesome if you guys, we're going to have like cars and just maybe have you guys maybe in one of the vehicles, whoever can come that day. It's April, I mean, it's June the eighth. Of um, and the parade's going to start at eleven, right? Yeah, June eighth and ninth is the date this year. And um, we're going to start at the riverfront. Um, I'm not sure what that memento uh, area is. What is that called? Riverfront Park, okay. We're going to begin there. So um, and the parade will start at eleven. I'd like to see if I can get, should I go through Mark uh, email, just kind of get more details as we go along or?
Yeah, he can pass that.
Okay, but that would be great. We'll have um, Lonnie Dudley always works on getting us some vehicles and we'd love if you guys can ride to support us. That would be awesome. So.
Now they don't even have steering wheels.
And then the horses will be in the back, so y'all don't have to worry about that.
I definitely wouldn't ride if we were behind.
But yeah, so that's, that's where we at. But like Donald said, we appreciate your uh,
Everything.
Yes, your support and prayerfully you keep us on there. So.
I will be looking for that email, seriously.
Is there any questions?
So on that, so Juneteenth is present eleven. Uh, just following the parade immediately, there we go.
Then we'll have the opening ceremony. Uh, the parade's going to go all the way from uh, by the riverfront all the way Kansas Avenue and then go up Eighth Street. Yeah, that's kind of just an easy route. And then we'll start our opening ceremony, which will be about like one o'clock.
You have your permit going with the city on that?
Yesterday, we start at the riverfront, we'll go two hours. Fourth Street. We'll go from Fourth Street to Kansas Avenue. Kansas Avenue will go all the way down to Eighth Street. We'll take Eighth Street right onto the park. Real simple. Real simple. And he's already okayed. We have everything in place.
Sounds like you're in. You've already been busy. Yeah, I've been there a couple of times.
Yeah, appreciate your uh, presence there too. That makes a big difference too. Like Donald said, just because it's based on uh, freedom of slavery, we all here together, you know? And it was, what just us to help make it free. So make us all free. So we just want to keep that together. Cause there always has been an accident. I grew up here for my, forever, you know, born and raised and um, it's always been just some kind of controversy with racism and this and that. And we just have to stop because most of our families, you know, we all mixture of different races and nationalities. And so it's just time to stop and all of us come together. So I think Juneteenth brings that. So. Okay, is this everybody?
Yeah, and just so you know, so this is Kaylee Vanderright. She's our deputy. It's okay. She's our deputy elections director. Um, so she helps us with our weekly meetings, but.
What's your name?
Kaylee Vanderright. K A L E. Oh, yeah, we're all over.
So she runs all of our meetings.
Oh, okay, okay.
So um, as far as correspondence, so should she email Michelle? To, to communicate with the commission, that's probably the best. So Michelle, email the Phillips. I'll give you that email. It's Clerks, C L E R K S.
Okay.
At A T C O. Yes, ma'am. K S dot org. Yeah, that goes to all of them. Yeah.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
Good way to communicate.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for your time. Really appreciate it. And I see everyone.
Thanks for sending all the info. It was helpful.
Okay, if you need any more, anything about the accounting or things, ask Donald. All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have.
Sending that right now.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
It's a text.
Have a good day.
Do we have any unfinished business? And counselor, please? Okay, um, let's see here. Are, okay, no executive sessions? Do you have a motion to approve the expenses from last week that were presented to us? Moved and seconded. All those in favor say add. Passes three to zero. And then from twelve fifteen to one, we are reserved for twenty twenty-five budget workshop. So I believe the appraiser is coming at twelve fifteen. Twelve fifteen to twelve forty-five?
And then twelve forty-five to whenever it's maintenance.
Okay. Can we add those to our agenda too? Do you mind, like, if, since they're in here, in our thing, just so? So for instance, when Polly had requested that executive session, I was like, okay, sure, we'll be done probably by noon. And then it dawned on me, I was like, oh gosh, we have workshops. So if we could just put those dates in here or those times, that'd be helpful that way, if you guys don't mind. So we know who to expect and.
Were you here not knowing that there? So if you guys would call me or let me know, Mark said. I just went and got something quick, because I didn't know.
Yeah, no, you're fine. And this is my fault for not like looking at this agenda to, to know. Um, okay, so twelve fifteen to twelve forty-five is Holly. And then twelve forty-five to when we're done at with one or a little after would be running. And then, yeah, we shouldn't have much after that. I would say by one fifteen-ish. Are you good with that, with adding those? Cause I know he set up specific times with the department heads. And then that way, when we're looking and the department heads are looking, they know.
So I guess my question, they're going to recess into workshop then, right, Pat? If it's about the workshop, they're going to recess. So I can just, just stop this, because then after that, you're going to then go do that, maybe get back in and say that you're going to do that, maybe. I don't know.
Or can I just do it all in one?
And then I can just off everything, but it's ready.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. So do we have any public comments? Seeing none? Okay, I would look for a motion to recess into budget workshop for appraiser and G I S as well as maintenance. And then following that. And then following that, we will go with Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge Superintendent. With road viewing for right away connections and other road concerns, the three commissioners and our deputy elections director, Kaylee VanderWaid. Um, do I have a motion to approve? Okay, moved and seconded all. Are you those in favor? Okay, say aye. I'm just not sure. Uh, passes three to zero. We will recess into new budget workshops first. Okay, thank you for these hard.